Let me know if you see it coming. I may change your agenda. Being seven o'clock, I'm over in the Dunbar and Borna Selectmen Meeting to order. All three selectmen are present, as well as the town administrator. Leo Martell will be videotaping for the benefit of the public, and it will be downloaded on the town's website, as well as YouTube by Linda Nickerson. Joe, and I have some old business under previous meeting minutes from February 18. Can I have the motion on those?
I'll make a motion to approve the regulations of February 18 as amended.
So, motion made second, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, aye. It was kind of simple as...
Yeah.
Just go from the left to the right.
Yeah. I take these last of the key cards.
You love that?
Yeah.
Don't read it.
I'm a little wired for that. Okay. Make a call.
Make a motion of 20?
Yeah, let's do a motion for the R S A 31.
Okay, I'll make a motion for R S A 31-095-87. We will remove 3V to accept fundraising for the REITs across the number of sponsors. Is you...
Is you?
Is you PDS for a month of $125 in the Blue Ribbon Property Improvements for $300 for a total of $125? Lee, do you have those checks?
I do.
Motion has been made, I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Okay, we got that portion done. Anybody coming in, Lee?
Nope, nobody yet.
We have a town report dedication we're hoping to get underway early tonight before we get into the other discussion on our agenda, so... Why don't we just give a few minutes to see if we have a tire pull up? Yeah, anybody got any public comment they'd like to bring up for us? Okay, that went quick. I'll go to a couple mailbox items we have, we cleared up most from the last week's meeting. Decked tail did the asbestos removal at the Kimball Pond Residence, 41 Kimball Pond, that the town is going to demolish, that was completed today. They did an air test after they were done, and so we're clear to demo those three buildings on site. Dave? Yep.
Do you run the timeline for that or...?
Well, I spoke with our town highway road agent, and he's going to do the demo, and we're going to use our dumpsters to try and keep it cost-effective for the town, and we were hoping to get this done a little bit quicker to beat the road bans, but I think that early next week the road bans are going to come out because the weather we had is starting to really soften the roads up, so I think we might have to wait out that month's period of time.
Okay.
Yeah. I was hoping we were going to catch it, but it doesn't look like we're going to.
Okay. Mr. Martell, just be aware, we want to know about that, all right?
Right.
Be aware, Mr. Martell, be historical aware.
Yeah.
Plus moving that stone.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll get your eyes on there.
Okay, thank you.
Bring them on. We have another letter here that was addressed to the town administrator, saying how happy she was about our library. Our library, Mary Drive, they said they're doing a great job. There seems to be something different there every day, and they're very happy that she's doing an outstanding job. It's nice to see her pull up.
I recommend that we pass to the board of the library.
Yep, that sounds great. We'll email that.
She'll give another minute or two, and then we'll go into...
Lee's going to give her a call.
She asked.
He's home, he answered the phone.
He did. I thought when he told me, I said, "Huh, something must be up." She doesn't sound like she was coming when I got to you, by the way. So he was home, huh? She's probably thinking it's next week.
I guess, since it's going to be a few minutes for them to come down. We'll start our discussion on the Old Route 13 property. We've got the two butters here, we've got their representation here. We may take a break just to get that town report dedication done. So if we see them pull up, we'll just take a break down, and we'll start back up when they're done. Does that sound fair?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We'll let her to start this process off from the Ofertal Law Office, and James Soucy is here tonight, and I'll probably have him start it off only because he presented the board with it. We also did get a follow-up representation letter from Pat Pansiaco, and we got a letter from her also asking if there was any decision by our board that she'd like to be present, so we invited the other parties here as well. And we asked them to bring me a butters, which I see both of them here. And so that being said... Oh, yeah, of course.
Just a quick question, Dave.
Yep.
Just wanted to make sure that you and I are going to be okay with this. I know that we've been on opposite sides about it matters.
Yep.
I just need to mention, you know, that we have had that...
Yep.
...situation, and want to make sure you were okay with that, and you felt like you could be impartial, and I would like to have you stay on the board unless you feel uncomfortable.
No, I think I can be impartial, this is a whole separate property, a whole separate time rule, and if you feel any differently, just let us know.
No, I'm fine with that, thank you.
Okay. That being said, we'll let James start off, because we got the letter more or less from you, and then we'll have to respond to that, and then we'll ask for the input you guys have from the land administration.
Thank you. You've received our letter, not going to beat that dead horse, but I'm going to go over it in summary. The section of Old Route 13 that we're talking about is essentially crucially right in front of, up front of Mr. Menard's house, and goes up the hill or in a southerly direction to where intersects with Holmes Road. There doesn't seem to be any issue from any standpoint. My clients, through Attorney Pansiaco, Mr. Menard's position, or the board, historically correct, you know, collectively, based upon the board's 2002 letter, that from essentially the northerly face of Mr. Menard's house, all the way up the hill, at least Hill-Pomes Road, but certainly up to the top of the hill, where Route 13 was attempted to be discontinued, and then apparently a motion on the floor to town hall meeting, I mean town meeting, it was removed from being discontinued, so thereby it stayed and remained a town road. Being a town road, the public, almost with a capital P, the public has a general right to use the full length and width of this section of Old Route 13. And as I lay down my letter, the board of selectmen thereby can regulate and enforce the use of that. Mr. Menard's use is specific to this instance here. Parking in the travel portion or travel lane of this road, as well as I would represent to the board, any road is not a quote-unquote reasonable use, and there is no reasonable necessity of it. Parking alongside of a public road, Main Street Concord, or even along, you know, this road here, along the side of it, the shoulder of it, for a temporary, for time, certainly, but not parking in the middle of the driving lane or in taking it away that takes up the majority of traveling lane and doing it repeatedly. In Attorney Pansiaco's letter, February 3 letter, she gave an account that, well, according to her client, he only parked the tractor there, and there was some wood there only long enough to move. I can represent to you members of the board, and I've stopped in on a number of occasions, I took additional pictures, that the Skidsteer tractor, very wide Skidsteer tractor, has been there on repeated occasions, and it wasn't just for, "Oh, well, that picture that was in my letter, oh, it was just there for that one day," or it's been there repeatedly, and throughout this whole period, from what I sent my letter, all the way up till a couple weeks ago when I took the last, probably two weeks ago when I took the last photograph. So this is not a one-time incident. The Mr. Menard attorney is trying to present it as, oh, it's a one-time thing. The souls are overreacting, it's far from the case. It's not reasonable to park in the traveling lane. Another issue, which you can see in the attachments to my letter, which are essentially the satellite photos towards the end of the entire packet, that show, and as my representation, approximation, not a surveyor, not a civil engineer, as to what the warrant article said the town vote resulted in, what portions of Old Route 13 are still a public way or a public road. Thereby, the public has a right to pass and repass along the full extent of it. And then, again, the downhill face, or the downhill portion from Mr. Menard's house down the hill, was the portion that was actually discontinued. The public no longer has a right to travel beyond that part of the land. Needless to say, Mr. Menard has a number of things that are within the right-of-way, so the parallel lines that go along the road, they are shown in my photographs. The right-of-way is fairly wide, it was a public road, and apart, the one uphill from Mr. Menard's house remains a public road. It's not maintained, it's not regularly traveled by the public, but nonetheless, it's still a public road. The right-of-way is much wider, as it is with many roads. The right-of-way is much wider than the actual traveling lane portion of Old Route 13, which is not also uncommon, and fairly common with old roads such as this, the traveling lane or portion of Old Route 13 does not go smack dab down the center line of the right-of-way. It meanders a little bit back and forth. So what we've got is, we've got an individual, based treating the public right-of-way area as his own land, admittedly, as you can see from Attorney Pansiaco's, I think first or second attachment, it's a narrow triangle or teardrop-shaped piece of land. He bought this piece of land knowing what it was. He doesn't get to use public land or everybody else's land, and he does have other places to put his wood, his hay, his plants, toys, trash burn barrels, garbage, tractor, big truck, whatever it may be. He does have other locations on his own property that he can store this stuff. Do you want to stop?
I don't know.
Okay, then I'll stop.
Just so I don't break too much in the middle of your presentation. George, why don't you come up and see us?
I told him I had a traffic on the same route today.
Okay.
The hot seat?
Yeah, front seat.
This is just the front. You're in trouble. You come to a seconds meeting.
You're in trouble now, George. George, we're here to dedicate the Dunbar and Tyler Report 20 to George Holden.
Really? I thought he had to be dead.
Just close. George is a longtime planning board member and conservation commission member, and he's also on the energy committee. I'm going to read the dedication out loud. George Holden and his wife Deborah Sellers moved to Dunbar in 1993. They bought a farmhouse on 40 acres at the end of Alexander Road, and proceeded to renovate it. The process...
We're not done yet.
Would probably outlast both of them. Concurrently, small-scale farming and holding professional jobs, George and Deborah, a, you're going to have to help me, neuropathic doctor...
Naturopathic.
Naturopathic doctor, cultivate an extensive vegetable garden, run a small maple syrup operation in the spring, and attempt to keep a small flock of chickens contained on their pen, in their pens, that are not devoured by nearby predators. Their son Colin went to Dunbar Elementary School and graduated from Gossum High School. He currently lives in Alaska, is training to be an electrician. A wanted Renaissance man, George lives a full life. He began work as an environmental consultant and hydrologist. Is that right? For Ari's Engineering in Concord, and is now an owner of the company. He's also an accomplished musician, and playing the guitar and violin in his popular, but never-to-be Grammy-nominated bluegrass band, The Grass Dogs. Now he continues to seek out other musicians to share his passion, and periodically plays music with the Hydro Geo Trio. Even though a career...
Don't wait for the album to come out.
Even though the career in the NHL was not in the cards for George, he still is an avid hockey player, and can be found on the ice at local ice arenas. A hard-hitting forward in the men's B league, whose members toss aside their reading glasses and cans to help each other place up their skates to relive the glory days of their youth, or playing in the back black ice or other local pond hockey tournaments with his buddies. He and Deborah are avid outdoors people. A former Appalachian mountain club hot man, hot man. George is a member of the 4,000 footer club. An avid cross-country alpine skater, and enjoys kayaking, and is passionate before-work surfer, ripping the waves at the wall in Hampton.
Who wrote this?
Before-work, eh?
It's up there now.
Okay, shortly afterward, George got involved in the Conservation Commission and the planning board.
Thanks to Harvard.
He led us through Cauchy River a few years ago and became the founding member of the Energy Committee, harnessing renewable energy and being a personal passion of his own. Always one to cheerfully step forward when a new project or task is discussed, George appears to entirely have ignored the old saying, "Never volunteer for anything, or it will become your job." As a result...
You're on the top.
Yeah. As a result, he has contributed countless hours of his time and expertise to the town of Dunbar over the past nearly 30 years. From 2001 to present, he's been a planning board and conservation commission member, and from 2007 to present, an energy committee member. Thank you, George, we're going to dedicate this book to yours, and we're going to sign it for you.
Thank you.
I'm going to bring those right over to the page.
Brett's right over the page. Brett.
Brett's the author. We'll get even.
Of course, you're not going to be all reading our signatures.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for all your time. Now you're going to come up and get the picture for us with our mask on.
I'm right over in the corner here, George.
This is not social distancing.
Yeah, that's all right. Yeah, you're just going to stand inside.
This is like a...
You're hiding behind my mask.
Smile, or something! Okay, we got another one.
Thank you, George, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
It's all right. We appreciate all your help. Don't throw it on my paper. Thank you. Okay, Ken, thanks for coming down.
Then I'll get my shot.
Hey, George? You're going to have to stand up at the town meetings, too. You're going to stand up at the town meetings, recognized. Hey, George, you're going to do this at the other two commission meetings, too. All right, I want to apologize for breaking you. How did I get that done in the beginning? Sure, it's time to speak, you know, so it's all the time. Okay, go ahead, Jim.
All right. So stepping back into it, just so the board knows, I spelled this out in our letter, we've made several attempts to try to get Mr. Menard to essentially comply. We've explained what the law in New Hampshire is. Again, there doesn't seem to be any disagreement that portion of Old Route 13 that continues to be a public road. But there's been, unfortunately, no success with our efforts there. And again, in Attorney Pansiaco's July 8 letter, she agrees that it's a public road. She also further went on to agree that each party has the, quote, "right to use the full width of the road," and that neither party can block the other's access to it. But unfortunately, that is and has been what Mr. Menard has been doing, treating the road, the traveling portion of it, as his, as his own property. In Attorney Pansiaco's most recent letter, which the board has a copy of the other February 3 letter, Attorney Pansiaco felt it necessary to include approximately 22 pages of documents from court case that really has nothing to do with what's going on right now because Mr. Menard is sort of the actor, if you will. And I unfortunately have to infer and relate to the board that it's just basically, simply a distraction method to try to get the spotlight, so to speak, to be turned away and off of Mr. Menard and onto my clients, but the focus should be what's going on right now.
James, are you speaking about the previous court case?
Correct.
Okay.
And the documents that were included with that.
It does, it does give some clarification, I don't think it really works against you guys.
It does give a bit of clarification, but all of those, all of what the court found essentially was already in the board of selectmen's prior letters and everything else. And what I would say is, I represent to the board that, you know, unfortunately, my clients had a misunderstanding of what the law of New Hampshire is with respect to that portion of the road. And, you know, since then, there isn't any kind of issue that's been going on. They were misunderstood, they're not attorneys. So I think it's straightforward as that, but to say that, you know, this is all going on the whore, and somehow to raise it in a distract or kind of, sort of way, I don't think was quite appropriate, but that's a choice for another attorney to make. More importantly is this issue with Mr. Menard's shed, or the shed that's on Mr. Menard's property. In her February 3 letter, Attorney Pansiaco tries to characterize the location of the shed in its reference, and you see it in a much smaller form, obviously, but in the draft survey plan that Attorney Pansiaco attached to her letter. What I've done is actually took a snippet off of that and enlarged it. And the shed is, what I would represent as slightly into or onto the right-of-way, but there's a vast majority of it, in fact, that is in the right-of-way. I will represent to you that Attorney Pansiaco relayed to me that it has something to do with protecting, and it's in her letter as well, protecting Mr. Menard's well, which I have to assume unfortunately, but assume that it's an artesian well, not something that was hand-dug and stone-lined and stuff like that, but it appears to have been an artesian well. And it, we have no information as to really where it's located within the shed. The shed somehow doesn't protect the quality of water in an artesian well. And so that really is an issue as to the red portion of that shed, or the portion of the shed that's in red. Again, this is just simply, you know, an enlargement of the plan that she submitted and then I color what's, you know, colored what's over into the public right-of-way. As you can see from the photos that I attached to my letter, which is in the, you know, last probably five or six pages of my letter, that shed is actually right up against the pavement that still is there on and along Old Route 13 that remains the public way. So it really does impact it. What I don't think is shown, but I mean, not in a large format, but in the plan that Attorney Pansiaco attached to her letter, uphill slightly from where that shed is located, so it's to the left of this page, is a PSN H or EverSource public utility pole, power pole, telephone pole. And so that in and of itself, and it may be in those, maybe you'll see it in portions of those pictures from the left-hand side of the photos, is a utility pole, which also narrows the area of the right-of-way that my client or anybody using the public portion of this section of Old Route 13 can actually avail themselves of because the power pole jets out. How and why it kept put there, I have no idea. I also can tell you, and I'm sure Attorney Pansiaco would explain this, is that she's written to EverSource, and I don't think it's gotten any response back. I would be very surprised if EverSource moved the pole or did anything, you know, with it. So we do have a defined sort of side-to-side movement on this, and there is, and I hope that the board will take a closer look at the photos that I've submitted, there is a number of things that are personal property, the shed, his vehicles, that are consistently in the right-of-way, the public right-of-way, along this, along this roadway. Attorney Pansiaco also brought out in her letter to the board that my clients have, you know, other ways of getting to and across their land and everything else. I'll inform the board that under New Hampshire case law, that has nothing to do with the public's right to this. I'm a member of the public, and you and me should be able to drive down that road and along that road. The public has a right to it, Mr. Menard doesn't have a right, in quote-unquote reasonable use, to park and put his stuff for any length of time in or on the traveling portion. The right-of-way, not going to be blocking anybody possibly, as long as that use is reasonable. So far, it hasn't been. So, you know, that's really what we're looking for, and the fact that my clients may have some other access or have a lot more land, none of those things are a factor in this matter. So what we're respectfully asking of the board of selectmen is your assistance in this, to get Mr. Menard to move his personal property, his vehicles and his shed out of the right-of-way, and then keep them out of the public right-of-way. Again, the shed, if it has some protection supposedly to Mr. Menard's well, apparently Mr. Menard would be the only one who would be running into his own well, and I don't think that's necessary to have this huge shed in the public's right-of-way. Ask that the board, again, take another detailed look at the letter and our attachments, and hopefully, you know, respectfully request that the board take the action that feels appropriate.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just to let you guys know, all board members did read the packet very thoroughly. We had quite a bit of time to review them. And I also did a full review of the file that we had from the town, and I think that you guys printed in the file, because a lot of the stuff in the file is the same stuff you guys both have provided. So Pat, I guess, Jim, you're good for now?
Yes, thank you.
And I'll let you respond at the end as well, but we'll go ahead and get some stuff from Pat here from later.
I'm going to run a little... I think what I can tell about is this little diagram, I can't really see it, you have that in your packet. This was done by the surveyor, and I kind of colored it up a little because it was easier to follow. A couple points that I can tell you, Attorney Soucy.
That's a little slimmer than what you made me. But if you have...
I think, I think Attorney Soucy mentioned that this classic portion goes from the old Fred Mills house down at the south end up to the front wall of the...
I think the layout's had just passed the old Fred Mills.
It did. And the way I read that language in the layout, it says, I would be coming up towards the house. Now, again, the language isn't all that clear, it's not that specific. I think it goes beyond the front of the house, because I read it, it's coming up from, or it says here, from opposite Fred Mills' house to just beyond Mr. Mills' house.
And you're going to remember, Pat, there were two Mills on the hills, and then one that's further up.
Yep.
And then they were going down to the second.
And I think Fred was at the bottom, wasn't he, down at the south end on Attorney Soucy's diagram? So the path that's still open, you come up, well, heading north, and I guess coming north, you're going down.
Correct.
Yeah, so I found that really confusing, but heading towards John Mills' house, it goes to just beyond, so I see that as to approximately the shed, and I will admit... And I will admit, it's not exact in the way.
Yeah, somewhere, somewhere around where the shed and/or house lie right there, they're, they're fairly even, but the shed would be in the qualifying section, I think, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yes, it is. And I think if you look at those blue dots, those are the big posts Mr. Soul put in the middle of the road to prevent my client from using the whole width of the road beyond that because that part is being discontinued. So, another thing I want to at least give you a little overview of. He's been there for a while and I'll give these to just figure who who follows him.
He, he, yes.
Um, my client.
Good, thank you.
Um, at least just kind of give you a little overview of the, the four years of the perspective since my client's been living there. And if you start at the back, you see 2014, you can see three homes where Mitch lives. And you can see it's pretty heavily wooded. So then you go to 2016 and you can see the disaster there when Mr. Soul decided he was going to log his property.
Oh, Pat, let's not go there. Let's not overdrown, say, it's not a disaster. He has a right to log it. Retract, retract that.
He has a right to log it.
Correct.
And he doesn't have a right to leave it so the water's running on my client's property. And in addition to that, there was quite a bit of trees cut on my client's property. But you can also see there are other roads. And I agree, it's not relevant to the width of the road and who can use it. But looking at this from an objective perspective, you can see that from that and the drawings that we submitted, the Menard lot is very narrow, long-performing lot. It's a scrap of land that was created when Route 13 was moved over. There really is no other way into his lot other than that short length, it's fifty foot wide, maybe a hundred, a hundred and twenty feet deep. That's what we're talking about here. And what seems to be a nice thing from this conversation is a word that we use no law all the time, reasonable. I know of no law that says you can't park on the side of public right-of-way. And if I'm missing something, perhaps you can enlighten me.
I'll just ask you a quick question.
Sure.
Pat, what about parking in the, you know, part of this is paved, you know, it's core pavement. What about parking in the travelway?
My client is not allowed to obstruct the access of the public passing over the road.
Right.
That, I agree. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, because I'm gonna, I'll just go somewhere quick and try to maybe keep us from being all in the bush.
Yeah, what?
It looks like in the pictures that we have.
Mm-hmm.
That were provided, and I think you guys both provided pictures. And I went for four site visits.
Oh, great.
Well, I went for a site visit. I went for a site visit. And with the shed being on the edge of the right-of-way and approaching the right-of-way to the distance it is, like the picture he showed here, when you park next to the side of the shed, you're in the travel portion of the right-of-way, I think, is what. If you look at like where this truck had parked.
In the first one, yes, okay.
You know, that paved section is the, the crest or the center of the road where that is. And it paved right over up to the shed edge. And so I think what James was saying earlier was the parking is in the travelway, not just on the edge, whereas if you went past the shed and pulled over maybe on the same side as the shed, it wouldn't be in the travelway.
So you're suggesting the truck be parked further to the side, in front of, or behind the shed?
Yeah, I guess either side if you parked it. You know, this whole shed here.
Mm-hmm.
All but, it looks like maybe a foot or two of it are within the ra, travel right-of-way here.
I believe it was measured at six feet by Bepha Design, but, um, I don't know what to say.
Yeah, it didn't show us any dimensions on that, Pat.
Yeah, it wasn't. I asked him. That's verbal, so I can't confirm that.
Um, if we go to the third picture showing the, um, horse, I think a horse or maybe a trailer.
Yes.
It looks like that is fairly centered in the travelway where it would be hard to pass around it.
Mm-hmm.
And so, and then the last picture shows, I think, a pile of wood and a skid steer. It looks like it's, is this the one, Pat?
Yeah, why can't you get by there with an vehicle? And let me ask you this question. If you look at the plan that actually located that pole, the pole's smack dab in the middle of that side of the right-of-way on the west side. That's really a problem.
What pole?
That the overhead light pole.
Telephone pole?
Yes, across sort of from the shed there, that's right in the middle.
It's located down there.
It's on the dotted line, Dave.
Yeah. It run a line, extend a line off of the southerly face of Mr. Menard's house and go up towards the top of the page is pretty much the intersection.
That one looks with, um, C with my letter D.
Yeah, I'm looking here. Let me get back to it.
You can see it in the picture with the truck too because the right-of-way goes, I would say, ten and twelve feet beyond the pole to the left in that first photograph.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at it.
Got anything?
Oh, my God.
I was going to give you mine.
The pictures weren't his.
Yeah. Next one, C, I think. Oh, sorry, there you go. See that pole?
It's on the edge of the right-of-way, right?
No, it's actually, if you split it up the middle, it's right in Mr. Soul's half of the road.
Oh.
Right in the middle.
There is no, there is no half of the road. This is a public section.
Oh, there's, I was looking at it and I am parked, it looks like.
So you can see that that telephone pole there is like right in, it's like about ten feet in from the edge of the right-of-way. And that really is what the obstruction is here, even more so. Now, I did send a letter in, Jim, I did not get a response as you said. I tried. If that pole were relocated back out of the right-of-way, he'd have free access there with no problem. Because if you look at it then from the first photograph that in, in Jim's letter, you can see it's pretty open there to the left of that truck.
I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna review to something here and you tell me, Pat, what you're talking about.
Okay.
When, I'm not sure if this is a two-rod or a three-rod. Most would probably see that road at the time.
Um, I think they said it was fifty feet wide, right, Jim?
Um, so that'd be a three-rod.
Three rods.
Yeah. Do you remember how many rods it was?
It's fifty feet, so that would be three.
Yeah, three rods, so twenty-nine, six.
Yeah, twenty-nine, six is three, yeah.
Um, when a, when a road is laid out with that number of rods,
Mm-hmm.
there are times that within that right-of-way, there's all around lodge, all around weapons and other things. So the travel portion of the road may not be the center of the right-of-way per se. So the traveled portion of the road could be all the way to one side or all the way to the other side.
Yeah.
So I think that the traveled portion of the road is what we're concerned with being blocked, I guess. Would you, would you say that's right, Jim?
Correct. And I was just looking at the photograph that happened to be attached to mine. The very first photograph has the, the big chick, chick truck in it. And that, you know, probably sometime during the summertime because all the yarrow and the weeds are up and everything else. And really can't even see probably the bottom, you know, three, three feet of the phone, telephone pole, or power pole. But if you go to the photographs, this is the, the last photograph that's in my packet just before attachment B, all the leaves are up a tree. So I would infer that that's sometime during the fall. And weed, annual weeds have died back. And you can see that the base of that pole, or at least it's visual in this photograph, is, is well into the weeds on the left-hand side of that photograph. And I would guess probably five, six feet out of the traveling lane. So that is where the public has...
Do you know that's where the public?
That's, that's where the public has the right to be.
So in a, in response to that, if you can look at the aerial photograph from 2016.
Okay.
And that's like four, about four years ago, maybe a little more. See the truck in the road, right exactly where it's all growing up now?
Yep.
It was clear at one time. And I, I'm guessing this was before the trees all bloomed in April. That was the date on Google Earth, but... It's, it's not something my client needs to maintain to keep his neighbor happy. I mean, this looks like the traveled way went further over towards the stone wall that runs along the road. And the road was a layout today by the town.
Yep.
Before the state had it. And there was a stone wall, and I think most of it's still there, but not. And for some reason...
I did see the stone wall laying in the paint.
Yeah, when, um, in fact, when the easement was granted by Mr. Soul's predecessor, I believe it was maybe his father, that's when that pole was put there. I don't know, I don't know if public service can do that or not, but...
When was the shed, when was the shed existed?
It was existing there when he bought the home. It was also there when Mr. Michael owned the home. And I can't speak to anything after that.
Do you know the size of it, Pat?
Um, do you know how big this shed is?
Little by twenty.
Well, I don't think. You know, the area was built much.
The shed?
Yeah.
Frank Michael said two years ago it was there, over ten years, so... And he died two years ago, so...
I saw a note in this file, maybe nobody had seen it before, but I think it was dated around 2000.
Okay.
Where somebody brought it to the attention of the then building inspector. So somewhere, I would think around or before that time, but it's been there for a substantial amount of time.
Yeah.
And it's never gone before.
Um, I think, as they, Pat, it seemed one thing. Parking in that traveled portion. And, and, and up against the shed up to that pole seems to be the traveled portion of the road at this corner of time. In fact, in this photo, I'm not sure what, but it looks like there's a, it looks like there's a substantial hill there on the side of the road.
On the left of the road?
Yeah, towards that pole.
No, that's pretty flat.
No, there's, there's a, if it goes from there, from that pole to the stone wall, it goes up two, two and a half feet?
Not quite that much, but some...
So it's two feet. So it's not, it's not as flat as this piece of paper is that shows this survey plan, that's for sure.
There's a drainage ditch there that...
Right.
You guys blow it and you guys log it too. We could sell that more damage than you don't have to deal with it.
Okay, so, um, we all want to address the board up here, okay, when you guys talk. So just to keep it neighborly somewhat. So Pat, I guess, finish addressing the board with whatever you have for us there. Go through your exhibits if you want, and then we'll...
Um, I feel like exhibits, in, in two big points of order, I included that so you could understand this is not new. Because I did feel as you picked up on it, that the court gave a pretty straightforward analysis in a couple paragraphs of what had happened here. There was an effort, again, in around 2001 to discontinue that road. But that would be a real difficult thing for my client to spot his absence because of the configuration of the wad. And you look at it, it probably would create a pretty dangerous situation. Home's road, common it as it does, is a little unusual. But, um, that was the reason why I included the court case, not for any other reason. And then I, then I said to myself, well, if I leave all parts of it because I don't need it, do they think I'm trying to hide something? That's why it's all there. But once again, I think what's needed here is consideration of reasonable. There has to be given take on both. As much as Attorney Sucey will say, oh, yes, you're right. You're entitled to use the full width of the road. There's no one using the road here but the two of them. This is not a public road that people use. The public...
It is a public road, but not that it's used.
Right. It's not like, you know, he's arguing that members of the public can freely pass up and down, up and down a hundred and twenty foot length of road? Because beyond that, it's discontinued. What we're really talking about is two neighbors. Now, one other thing too to point out, just to try to settle this, just so you know this, um, and to get along, if you look on my little diagram and you see an orange fence there.
Which one are you speaking of?
This is the map, the plan, the survey plan. My client also raises livestock and has, you know, plantings and all that, the bomb stuff. He moved that out of the right-of-way to keep his neighbor happy. But technically, it's on his own land.
That's beyond the ocean, you mean?
Yes, the orange. He's going to great lengths.
I could see some orange there, yeah.
Because he was having trouble too getting that behind there. So he did try to keep things civil. He made that added effort. That was a lot of work. There, but I also think there has to be consideration of, you want to leave a certain amount of space there so people can get in and out. Tell us what's reasonable. If a vehicle can drive by, is that reasonable?
Before we answer that.
Okay.
I'm gonna ask just a quick question.
I'll leave that with you.
Yeah. And looking at these photos.
Mm-hmm.
It seems like the only spot that seems to be the underlying issue from the photos and from the conversation here, it seems to be directly adjacent to the shed.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a way we could park any of those vehicles that are more than, you know, it's not like parking it there for a few hours. These are overnight. We have pictures and he has pictures. I've gone for four visits. These types have gone up. And that's, I've only done that since you guys sent these packages. I just on my way by and swinging. I saw the skid steer there all the time, nothing else. I didn't see any of these other trailers or anything else was out of the way. Is there any way we could park that past the shed or on another piece of property so it's not within that travel way to have this kind of pull-away? Or is that something that you guys have...
Let me ask you a question is, and if you look at this map
Yeah.
on the front lawn, I mean, this is, it, it's pretty, it's pretty steep.
I'll give you an example because your client is nodding his head, yes, behind you. After the shed, there's, I think in this picture, like there's a pile of solid dust or something back in that area. Want to come up and take a look at it, Mitch?
Mitch, come up and take a look at this.
What are you asking? Put the skid steer way out back there?
Just past the shed so it's not within the travel portion.
Sure.
You know, because I'm thinking that you guys, as neighbors, would like this to go away and I'd like to find something reasonable so the town doesn't have to get into a lot of enforcement issues here.
I agree.
Have the police down there all the time and, you know, we did ask the, uh, the police chief to be present, and we have a member here.
Okay.
And only for the fact that, so they know
Mm-hmm.
after this meeting tonight, hopefully, we have a clear path of what's going to be open and what's not going to be open and kind of have some direction from the select board.
Mm-hmm.
And after reviewing your cases here and looking at everything you guys have presented, and we do have a previous select board's kind of decision to try and keep this open earlier, as a, as a roadway there, we were going to try and rely on that decision, you know, and try and come up with something to take care of the parking. We would really, as a board, like to not get into the whole shed and well issue at this point if we can avoid that. I know... I know that it is within the right of way. It was done before your time.
Mm-hmm.
And I think to try and work that backwards at this time would not be beneficial for the town or you guys. Um, but I would like to keep it.
Same thing. The shed has created a choke point, which has been very inconvenient for the neighbor.
Yeah.
And, and as a choke point, that should be avoided. We should avoid the choke point.
I, I agree with that. Um, I also think that the pole is a big piece of this. Now, I guess what might be helpful here is for us to be clear. Where do you think the class six point ends? Is it at the shed? Is it beyond the shed?
I would like to not use the shed at all as a reference, only because that wasn't in the original description, but the house was.
Okay.
But if you do look at your picture here of your diagram, the shed is all, almost even with the house at the angle it is on the back if you took a straight line across.
Okay.
And, um, you know, if this was going to become a larger issue, we'd probably have to go out there and mark the, have a surveyor mark the end of the room. I was hoping not to get into that type of situation if we can avoid it.
Yeah, we didn't want to get into it either. Now, but if we go from the back wall of the house and maybe go straight across to where the first blue dot is. I, I get a point of reference, so we know that where the line is. I think that could be part of the problem.
Right.
Um.
And it said just past the house, so, and I don't know if that existing little bump up on the house was there back in the day either. That could have been added since then.
In the back?
Yeah, that little.
That's a deck, that's not even a.
Yeah, so that's not, but it wasn't there, so.
Okay, so that's probably reasonable. So if he, if he's able to.
Just a, just a reference, I, to the board, I have this in my attachment as one of this satellite photographs and I have the yellow line going from the right turn of the page to the left.
Yeah, I did see your, like, two way out back, so you never have to look.
The, you go across there.
Which is about the same.
I don't understand what kind of person he is, but all of his friends, which kind of, to, to, to live around him.
This, this just. This really isn't.
I thought it was gonna happen here. Took the good one too long. I need something that.
All right, so, I think. Do I have this written? If I were to use this one here?
I think that is, is that very similar.
I think this is.
Very similar to what he had down on.
Okay.
That's a bit.
We'll buy sixty.
Turned in a little bit.
Yeah, and we'll just call the shed as, um, you're wrong.
Here it is.
Mm-hmm.
I already done that, yeah. And again, that's approximation, but.
Right, but it's more than a.
Why don't you show that to Mitch? I think it's always easy to see.
Mm-hmm. Using the back wall of the house coming across, so if you parked down here, it'd be fine. That's on your land anyway.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I think that's good. Um.
You know, I'm, I'm listening to both of you, but I assume, cause they have something to say, and then I just want to try and get a.
I'm trying to get some clarity.
Yeah, so if we have that clarity and, uh, that keeps that pinch point as mine has stated away, and I think it will avoid a lot of conflict.
I think so too. I think having a clear line will be really helpful, Davey. Um, but, you know, as I look at the, the dump truck in the first picture, that's towards, that's back there.
Yes, a lot.
But the other, the horse trailer is not. He says that was only there for a day. Um, the skid steer, that's easy to slide by.
But, but even if it's for a day, I mean, what's, I mean, you're denying, you're denying someone access to the property.
I would say at that point that if, um, Mr. Soul needs a wider passage, he needs to push the rush back to where it was in 2016 and widen the pathway on his side.
Well, I think that before we, before we go backwards, Mitch has already agreed to park it past the shed.
Yes, he will be.
So that gets rid of that pinch point at that point.
Yeah.
So one of the, we'll go backwards in our meeting here, cause we've kind of gone forward. I don't want to keep going back, cause we'll be here all night talking about the same little pinch point.
No, we, he will do that. He'll get one.
He'll do that. Um, I would like to listen to, to, uh, anything they have to say. Now, Pat, unless you have something.
Nope, I'm outside.
And then, you know, bring it back at the end and make sure.
That's very helpful.
Yeah, what are your, what are your thoughts with this? I'm trying to, yeah, for the solution that works for both of the landlords here, right?
Um, appreciate the board's efforts with respect to, um, Mr. Menard continuously parking not just the skid steer, but other vehicles and, um, equipment, um, alongside of or in the general area and uphill from, uh, the shed. It's in the right of way, the public right of way. Um, it, it does not, this issue and this problem posed by Mr. Menard does not relate just to these two people. This is a public portion of the classified road. It's a town road. He has a small piece of property that's not in dispute. What also isn't in dispute is he bought it knowing what he was buying. He can't land rent here. End of story. It's that also. That is also very clear. If you look at the, both Attorney Pansiaco's 2016 aerial, uh, as well as the, the zoom portion, if you will, that shows the yellow line, um, sort of the demarcation um, of the public section of Old Route thirteen and then the non-public section. Um, the bottom of the attachment that I have, you can see a sort of a, of, of, I guess a tan or an orange-like triangle, um, in that, that's all Mr. Menard's wood pile, most of that. I'll say most, cause some of that wood has been hanging around for quite a long time, is now a whole parking area. He also has a, some sort of Subaru station wagon on a trailer that's been there for a number of years. And he has other places to put both his skid steer tractor, as well as his trailer and everything else. He's using the public section of the road for his convenience.
I think he, I think he just acknowledged, denied that he would not park here.
But it's not just in the area, this pinch point.
Oh, absolutely.
I totally get what the board is trying to do, but it is.
But that's the most critical part, but anywhere along that road, which is the, the public domain, he can't block it. That's, that's common sense. I wouldn't expect him to be in the middle. Would you agree?
I, I do not disagree with board members that it is or should be common sense, but as the photographs show, it isn't common sense because otherwise these photographs wouldn't exist. With this split wood and this wood that's all in this, the huge sod of pile, everything else, this pile of wood that's in the other photograph, I can't just say, yeah, deliver me three cords of wood on Main Street and dump it and then say, don't worry, guys. You know, I get to use this. I'm a public. I have a right to use this and it's in the travel lane. You can't do that. That is not reasonable. It's, oh, I'm just gonna park this horse trailer, this black back trailer here and, you know, School Street. Uh, this is gonna be there overnight. Don't worry about it. I got two cars. You can't park in the traveling lane. End of story. Four-way flashes while you're loading, unloading for a short period of time, an hour or two or something when you're moving. Okay, fine. But you can't dump raw materials in the public way. You just can't. So that's first and foremost, that this isn't just about these two people. It is about them, but it's not just about them. Can't store, the board member just said, firewood and there are huge plastics wrapped, you know, you guys saw them, I'm presuming, but the large plastic wrapped white bales of hay that are also now right there in the public right of way. He doesn't get to use the public's land. End of story. All the other stuff that's there, the burn barrel, there's another picture with kids' toys, car seats, whatever they may be. His access also to his property is not the issue. It's not the problem. He has easy and readily access to this piece of property that he owns. Other than the fact, the stuff that he puts there, blocking his own way. But that's, access is not the issue. Um, and parking is not being done on the edge of the right of way. It's within the traveling way. So moving this skid steer further downhill or in a northerly direction gets it at least off the public's land. But I would inform the board that being an abutter to this discontinued portion of Old Route thirteen, as shown in one of these satellite photos, in this green hash mark area, my client has an abutter to this discontinued portion under mantrix statutory law, has an unabridged right to access his property without regard to whether he has access otherwise along the entire width and extent of the discontinued. That's statutory right. So Mr. Menard cannot park down there. It was an era of fact and law for Attorney Pat Pansiaco to say, oh, well, that's your half of the road down there too. It may be, he may be the fee owner of that road, but my client has a statutory right to cross over it. So even now, oh, well, Mr. Menard moved the fence posts and fence for his, his critters and his animals. That's his choice to be, putting critters on such a teardrop, tiny triangle piece of land. The other part of it is, is that he put those fence posts and the barbed wire out there and said, no, I'm not gonna move them. Again, maybe that was his part of not understanding properly this elusive middle of the road document that everyone misunderstands like adverse possession. Um, and so now he comes in with his attorney and says, well, geez, he's already moved those. Never informed us that he moved them and the last communications we had was they weren't gonna get moved.
Can you hold that a quick second?
Yeah.
Dave stopped in this stream, but I think she said the posts were put up by someone.
No, there's, there's two different, two different things going on, if you will. There are, um,
I'm getting all confused.
No, that's, it's, that's, no, that's a good point to bring out. So if the board looks at, um, if the board looks at where the, this, sort of length of where the house is shown in this, uh, scrunch map, it has tax, it has the word, H G Block ten, that, that script. Going to the, towards, just clearly to the top of the page in the dotted portion of the, um, discontinued portion of Old Route thirteen, you'll see the line, a little hash mark, a line, a little hash mark. And that's the, I believe, the orange, um, line of orange fencing.
Okay, that's the fencing that he had up, which he took down.
Which was, I believe, was, you know, which I believe were, um, either smaller posts.
They're just like chicken wire.
Smaller post and barbed wire, which, right, like, for the.
They weren't electric.
Beef critters or something like that, whatever it was. But that's the, the other thing that we're referring to. So along that line and hash mark line, it has this wire fence. If you go to the left or back of the road towards the shed, in that same, along that center line, you can see some either squares or circles. I'm not really sure what they are.
Blue.
Um, they have some kind of blue coloring to them, but that's underneath that, it says wooden posts. Those wooden posts admittedly were installed by my client with this middle of the road confusion and misunderstanding. So that's the, you know.
Are they still there, Jim?
Uh, are those posts? Those posts are, I mean.
I didn't see them in any of the pictures.
I was just saying, that's also a non-issue, but, but the board's understanding as to what's in here and what Attorney Pansiaco was referring to as fencing and what is also shown.
I did get confused on that. Like, I can see the two different areas now.
Right.
Where your client had some fencing up and now that's gone and then I see the posts and those are gone. So move to those areas.
I, and, and again, and again, because as it's shown in the enlarged satellite photograph that we're referring to with the yellow line that I have as an attachment, um, to my letter, the, towards the top of the page is the green, um, diagonal lines, which is a recent approximation as to where the road going in a northerly direction downhill, along the roadway is now the discontinued portion, according to what we've got from the town warrants and the votes and everything else. That, the full extent of the right of way, under the interest statutory law, because Mr. Menard is an abutting property owner and my clients are abutting property owners, each of them still have full statutory right to pass and repass along the full length and width of that right of way. That's, that's there. That in, you know, I, I would, I will represent that my clients have not, in writing has to be waived. They have not waived it. And I would guess that Mr. Menard hasn't waived it either, so it still exists. So that portion, for the downhill portion, if you will, um, it pretty much is between these two landlords, these two neighbors. That's what the statute says. Access is not the point. So if you look at what I said before, the 2016, April 2016 satellite image, which as Attorney Pansiaco indicated, well, must be, you know, late fall, early spring, something like that, cause there's no leaves on, down towards the, the bottom, or almost you can imagine route, the, the current Route thirteen heading northerly, Holmes Road heading generally northerly with the intersection, that little triangle of land is all Mr. Menard's and he can park his tractors and trailers and favorite trucks or whatever else. Down towards the, you know, the, below his house and below the parking lot that's shown there, the driveway and parking lot area. There, you can still see some wood that's there and that was back in 2016. Um, so he does have other areas where on his land where he can park and store his equipment, his wood, his, his toys, the bales of hay, whatever they may be, that are not otherwise within the public right of way and aren't going to cause any kind of pinch point or kicking the can down the road. And we're back here in three months or six months, dealing with yet again, something else in the right of way. It should be absolutely crystal clear. Nothing can get put in the right of way because of one reason or another. The public and or both parties get to use the pole with an extent. The town, the board, this board's own letter that I attached to my letter, which is the, this, uh, I don't know if it's ever, May? May, May second, 2002, from the board of selectmen. Um, Greg, Bill, Hammond and Swindler are alongside it saying, you know, this means that the general public can use the right of way and cannot be blocked in any way. That's pretty straightforward English. It means not in any way, not in any purpose, and no matter how big or small your property is and whether you've got access otherwise to it. Um, I would caution the board against coming to a conclusion or, uh, you know, making a formally, making a statement that I think it was heading in, is that somehow it's okay for, you know, Mr. Menard or an abutting landowner to park something repeatedly and or continuously either in the public's right of way or in the right of way of the discontinued portion of Old Route thirteen. I understand why Attorney Pansiaco, on behalf of her client, is representing or raising the argument that the PSNA Trevor Source Utility Pool is the quote-unquote problem. I would suggest that the board take a closer look at the photographs and actually go back out there, if you want, and actually take a look at the photography of where that pole was put. The pole was put there, cause there isn't a travel lane there and they, I'm sure, they presumed that it was outside of the roadway or anything else and it was a safe bet for them to put it there. Not surprised that PSNH EverSource didn't respond and I would bear to, you know, bet against any kind of person that would want to say that, oh yeah, EverSource is gonna move that pole, so.
It is typical that they do put them in the right of way as well that follow.
And, and they're near the, near the travel portion. It's not, it's not in the travel portion. So as it looks on this nice, nice flat exhibit scene that Attorney Pansiaco put, technically it is in half of the public right of way, but, um, it's already been pointed out by a board member, but it's, it's not near the travel portion of Old Route thirteen that is still a public road. Um, and so we've got this issue that I hope that it gets pinned down, that nothing can get put in the right of way, nothing can get deep put in the right of way. Either the public section or the section of Route thirteen that's been discontinued for two different legal reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I say, if you won't respond, it looks like, uh, your client's raising his hand in the back. Do you want to speak first? Okay.
This is the pole that you put up around the road, just to be clear. And then. Those were aligned with the whole right of way and.
They've been removed.
Yeah.
Yes. My client, my client had them removed. They had one nail set on.
Why do you bring this up now?
Um, just so that. Um, just out of clarity. I disagree.
This wasn't your client's fault.
No, no, that is the poles that Mr. Soul put up the center line of the road to keep my client on his side of the center line. Um, but those are gone.
Yeah.
So beyond to the north of the line that we just talked about, I disagree, but that's a civil matter. It's not something that this board has to decide whether there are implied private rights to use the full width of the right-of-way. The town released the public rights when it discontinued the road completely to the north of that line. And you don't need to decide that. He can park on his side of the center line beyond the class six portion. And you'd have to take that up in a court room. I'd be happy to do that.
Can you tell me, is this pole, um, oh, here on the edge still in the roadway, is that all gone at this point?
I, I just, the wood pick, the byway, yeah.
The front of the block out? No, it was the one on the corner, it looks like of Old George and...
The bales, the bales, near the bales of hay.
The other way in this picture here.
Near, near the bales of hay.
Right there.
The bales of hay are on his front line.
Within the right-of-way.
In the right.
It's in the left. Um, okay.
This, is this put away?
On my mailbox?
At your house, this is all.
The mailbox is right here, all this is.
Your land. Is the wood there here?
It's only too long.
If it's in the right-of-way, you can move it down.
It's right, but a little too long over here.
I'm talking about this. Okay, that's...
Look, show us the evidence, or you're inside the tree line, not outside the tree line in the road.
Right.
Doesn't really make sense.
Um, so if it's okay for public service to obstruct the right-of-way, why is that okay? And he can park on the edge of the right-of-way. And I'm talking on the edge, not by the shed.
I mean, I've got to answer for public service, but I think that the utilities was supplying power to that house.
I don't know which house it goes to.
That would be down that road to supply power.
Oh. Well, and I think it's only fair to ask that question, because it is the utility pole that's the problem there. I mean, it's definitely contributing to the issue.
It contributes, I agree, but it's not the entire problem.
No, it's not. No, I, there's been, and there's been no attempt here at a land grab. So if my client remains not parked to the south of the line that we just drew on this little map here, even with the back line of his house, the town will be okay.
Yeah, we don't want to see that pinch point blocked, and then, you know, I think that there is some use if they both have that remaining road. As you said, it was abandoned, discontinued.
To the north?
To the north.
No, it's not, it's been modified by case law only to the extent necessary, and it's only for access. That's what the case law says. There's no statutory right. When, why, why would you bother discontinuing a road?
I was thinking the same thing as you were standing there.
Yeah.
And we're arguing.
Okay.
So, um, that part has been discontinued, the satellite and the road has gone back to each of the landlords, but as he states...
Mm-hmm.
The landlords have the right to use that to access their property, the full width of the right-of-way, so...
As nee, as reasonably necessary.
Right, so...
His land goes all the way back here, he doesn't need to come up here. So that shouldn't be an issue. My client should be able to use this strip of land. He's not going to block, he never goes down here.
If he's parking on that section permanently, aren't you going to be...
Down here?
Back in the same, you know?
On his side of the line? He can park there, he owns that land, just like Mr. Soul owns this land and my client can't use that side.
I guess, I guess that will be a civil matter.
That's a civil matter.
Just, just from my record, I'd like to point out that RSA 231:43, Roman numeral three, so the last section, states, and I'll quote directly, "No owner of land without the owner's written consent be deprived of access over such highway at such owner's own risk." And this is within, 231:43 is the power to discontinue class four, five, and six highways. So the very fact that a portion, as it says in class, in section Roman numeral one, a portion of the road was discontinued by town vote, exactly specifically what we've got here, Roman numeral, subsection three, says that no owner shall be, uh, no owner of land shall be deprived of access over such highway. Presumption is there, it's an abutting land owner, not someone all the way across some town, but shall not be deprived of access over such highway at such owner's own risk. So they go onto it by your own risk, but you can't be deprived of it, and nowhere in the statute does it say, because I read verbatim, unless you've got some other way to get to you to and from your property. There's nothing in this statute, and the statute is still down, so...
Jim, can we have a copy of that statute for you?
Uh, sure.
Using his area or his yard isn't depriving him of access. He can come in here just fine.
But he still gets to use the whole.
No, we don't.
Yes, sir.
No, we don't get by...
But I would, I would agree with Attorney Pansiaco, um, that the, from that yellow line in my attachment, that's a satellite, um, image, uh, to the top of the page, meaning in the northerly direction or further down, going down the hill, um, is or should be specifically outside of the board's sort of purview or hollers to decide, but we're sort of...
And that's why I was saying, I was agreeing with you.
Questioning all life, that's all.
It's not a problem.
Yeah, that's fine.
So my client will agree, every, he will not park to the south of that line, and anything else will be parked beyond that pinch point, hopefully behind his building.
I think, I don't think decisions can be made here. I think this could be as easily as reform that was decided twenty years ago.
We can deliberate after.
Yep. We'll decide eventually. So, or we're open to that, we can make that happen. Um, and anything to the south there, we'll do our best, everything, but I don't think that you can say he can't park on the edge like anybody else parks downtown. Because that's a violating right, that's a public right, as long as he's not obstructing the travel way.
And for a short period of time.
Well, I mean, what do you do on, on a downtown dump button when people park on the side of the road? You get a fifty-foot row with twenty-four feet of pavement, right? You've got eight feet on either side on a shoulder.
But they don't leave their car there for three or four days.
He comes home from work.
You know, I mean, public use is public use at the time that they need the use. It isn't, uh, sustainable use.
But public use, as long as they're out of the way and the right-of-way is not obstructed, the vehicles can go in and out freely, and he's right on the edge, right on, right on the edge of his own lawn, why is that a problem? Parking is a violating use that's allowed within a public way.
Well, I, I'm going to go back and just, uh, say something. The shed comes out into the right-of-way.
Mm-hmm.
And so parking adjacent to that shed does block the travel portion of road, so we've kind of already cleared that up already, so I don't want to go backwards.
Right.
But what I'm saying is that section of road from this, um, southerly from this yellow line should stay open.
Mm-hmm.
And the travel way, as we've stated earlier, and it's obvious, doesn't always stay in the center. You know, like your example, there's not always eight feet on one side, sometimes there's four foot and twelve foot or whatever, but the travel way of the road, I would hope, would stay open, and that's what we're really, and I think Mitch has said he would do that, so...
Yeah, yeah. That's rea, that's reasonable and fair, so that we're not obstructing any access.
So I think now, uh, we've heard from the attorneys, we'd like to hear from a landlord because you guys showed up, if your attorneys are willing to do that or want you to do that.
Um, I've spoken to my client, I believe, and, uh, I didn't, I don't think there's anybody about it, any other.
I haven't seen any of them, but I'll...
You don't want me to say anything?
So you guys are good for now?
What about, yes, Mitch gets to park anything at all on this right-of-way. I mean, so I do too.
Correct, and that's the down, that's the slippery slope.
And then you've got to mess again.
Right.
Right.
So, no, we're good.
Okay. Mitch, go ahead.
So is the hay fine where it is? It's not, because of this, what's that?
It's not, is, is it in the right of way?
Well, the spurs through is, I go like this, the road's here, my hay's inside on my front grass, not on the road, and the town has the right to cut those trees.
So all those trees have been cut down too?
The town, the town has the right to cut down and maintain within the town's right-of-way. And if those hay, and if those hay bales are, which, take a closer look at it, again, my approximation, um, unfortunately, it's my understanding from my clients that the, um, state, the state highway bound that was, um, there at that corner, um, what's now Mr. Menard's property, um, is shown in these prior, um, miniature DOT copies, was actually removed by either Mr. Michael or someone, but...
No, John Mills.
The, the concrete bound with the hole and top and everything else that, if you, when you drive into off of existing, current Route thirteen, and all four tires are on to Old Holmes Road, immediately on the right and left, you can see the granite, the, actually, concrete, poor concrete, old state monuments, that demarcate the limitation of the current or now public right-of-way. The one that was basically, I guess, near these spruce or other bodies and these bales of hay, geez, that was always in the way, so we ended up hauling it out, and it's no longer there. That does mark the town's right-of-way. So, uh, as, as much as it may not be welcome news to Mr. Menard, I can completely sympathize, but yes, that's where the right-of-way is, that, that is the problem.
It looks like there is one bound still there.
Correct.
An iron pipe. So if you measured fifty feet from that iron pipe that you kind of went down straight now, it looks like there's a draft of a survey, was it? Did he put bounds in when he surveyed it?
I don't think so.
And I have one other question for you. How come if he surveyed it and he had this, all this information, obviously with the veil, how come he didn't show the class five section versus the class six section on the survey? Was it, was it not recent or?
Well, are you talking about, um, Old Route thirteen?
I'm talking about Old Route thirteen, the survey you guys provided.
And, and the D mark, the line of discontinuance, non-discontinuance?
Yeah, it's not.
It's not shown on, right.
So you've got Old Route thirteen as, you know, this is also Old Route thirteen.
Yeah.
Let's see, oh, this is shown shaded like this is all discontinued. That should be from after the house, as we've kind of talked about tonight, so how come he didn't show that as?
Despite, he, he wasn't sure where this line was either.
The surveyor?
Well, all he has is the tower reports.
Yeah, well, it says, it says just after the house, so I think that, you know...
Right.
You know, the surveyor is the person that would determine, you know...
But he was more concerned with making sure he got the boundary here, and he didn't go down this way, he had to...
Right, I knew that, but he's labeled that as Old Route thirteen, but shows it as a white, and then this is shaded. My only thought here, Pat, was...
This was the center line, yeah.
Right, my only thought here is if it gets sold, somebody's going to think it's discontinued right up to where Holmes Road is, because your survey doesn't show it accurate, so I think...
Yeah.
If it is a current one and you can talk to the surveyor, I think that...
It's still in draft, so we can add, you can do it.
Yeah, maybe, just so if it, if Mitch goes to sell the house, and, you know, I don't want him to think it's discontinued all the way up to the corner of Holmes Road. That's to your advantage.
Um, I agree with you. If we can agree and you tell us that this line is a good line to use, I will ask him to add that, because we haven't recorded it.
And I would, and I would ask him just to go back and do as close as he can off the written record of that day, 1963.
I think he would agree, and if you concur...
And it does say just after the house, and, you know, whether it's a foot after or three feet after, that's all going to be a gray area to me, but as, as long as it's after...
Yeah.
If he shows that on your plan, I think it would, it would help it be more accurate.
If you concur with that line on the back of the house, that corner we drew, I will have him add it that way, because actually it's your body that made that decision, you don't clarify that. So I can have him add that.
And I would say, I'm, you know, no, no official research or anything, but I did look, aligned up the deeds to make sure who was, you know, Mills and Mills Jr. and all of this. Pick some different names, guys, you know, I mean, just, don't name everybody the same first name in your family, but, you know, for several generations. Um, and so I was able, as best my understanding, I was able to sort out, you know, who's junior and, you know, the old man or whatever.
And which I referenced everything older to it, everything lined up that way, so I didn't think there was any question between you guys.
Right, but I would think that a surveyor would, would also be able to double-check all of that to make sure that what has been discussed is spot on.
I just didn't want the modern survey not to show what's actual, you know, in the field, and, and so if we show those two sections of road, I think it would be helpful, and then...
Yeah.
You know, like Mitch was saying, where is, you know, if his bales might be a foot out in there right-of-way or whatever, if, if they label that corner again, that one that was removed there, at least Mitch would have referenced, you know, nowhere.
So put that pin in.
Yeah, I would think it would be helpful if, I mean, you guys paid for the survey there. I think that, that way, they can see the fifty feet really, and you're right there, and you guys can try and stay clear of it and try and maybe get back to...
Well, the purpose of the survey too was to locate the roads and where it was, so that we...
Right, because it may not be all the way against that stone wall.
We just didn't know, um, so just that was helpful, but I'll have him add that and then put the, the, um, the northern portion to put his containment by. And put the data below. I think that, that's your problem.
All right, thank you. Mitch, could you have anything else you want to say? You guys are good. Um, James, you guys are good now, we'll bring it back to the board when we ask.
I would, the only thing I would say is for the board to refer back to what we, uh, what my clients have asked for, which is, uh, the letter from the past, and it's...
I heard you cover that, which comes to some... Bringing it back to the public, I can't see around the corner there, but... Anyone over there want to talk? Leo, you have anything, have a note from the general public?
I guess I own the road too, so I'd like to see it open.
All right, bringing it back to the board for discussion now. We've heard from both sides, we've heard from the abutters. I'd like to refer back to the board to the letter from the previous select board. I'm going to read through that, and then we're going to read James's cover letter, see what he's asking for, and if we think it may at least be added or subtracted, or if we're going to say that we believe that this, uh, original 2002 decision was enough, and we're going to just abide by it and then use this meeting as clarification on parking there, because I think we've got a lot cleared up in this meeting tonight that we're here. And, uh, you know, the police department is here, and they're going to be aware of it, so I think if both, both the abutters abide by that, I think it would be a beneficial solution. On the May 2nd, 2002, the letter said, "To whom it may concern from the select board at the time, the following is a Dunbarton Board of Select from the report on the status of Old Route thirteen as found in the town records. On March 12th, 1963, at the town annual meeting, Old thirteen was discontinued and banned from just below John Mills' house, now that of Andrew Michaels, to the foot of Mills Hill. This means that all the abutters to that section of the road now owned to the middle of the old right-of-way. The section above Andrew Michaels' house to the intersection of the present Route thirteen across the street from Fred Mills Jr. is still a town right-of-way. This means that the general public can use this right-of-way, and it cannot be blocked in any way. Abutters can cut brush and trees on their side of this right-of-way. However, if they plate anything, it is to be stated that during general road maintenance and upkeep of the right-of-way, these things may be removed and/or damaged." Removed or damaged. So I think that letter is very clear that it says, "This means that the general public can use this right-of-way, and it cannot be blocked in any way." Um, I think that this board would like to reaffirm, I'll wait to hear back from the other selectmen, reaffirm this letter tonight as well as state that... reaffirm this letter tonight, as well as statement, the, let this meeting stand on its own, as well as the discussion of not parking in the town right of way of the class five portion of that Old Route thirteen. Notes that I have here, no parking in the travel portion of the right of way on the road service should be allowed. Mitch gave us the shed size, which is twelve by twenty, because I could find no building permit or year that it was built, somewhere's around here, two thousand, I think. Uh, the well location, and looking at the, um, septic plan, shows the well in the shed, so I'm not sure if you guys will remember, but there is a septic plan here on file, and it shows that there is a wellhead in there. And, you know, we've made some progress here, that any parking will be done, will be past the shed, and hopefully, Mitch, I'd like to reaffirm that if you can park on your property instead of the right of way to try and keep a civil discrepancy from going on, I think it would behoove you to try and do that. I'm not ordering you or telling you, I just think that, you know, if you guys could try and work to a better end, I think that, you know, I think everybody learns something about where the land is, where the road is, and I think we've come a long way here. Do you have anything you wanna add?
Well, you know, the concern I had with parking on the right of way is, it isn't hard afterwards, 'cause you have a vehicle there, or whatever, is now you're in the travel lane, when you're putting another vehicle there, is if you've gone there several times, or looked at the pictures, that may have been an occurrence, is something's there, and so something's out, you travel, and so it does make it difficult for people to get back and forth. Not everybody uses it, you know, maybe hunters, I don't even know, I know he's always, he uses it, maybe in the same time, uh, he's using it at the same time, so I guess that could be, that's my concern with the conflict with using, continuous use of the right of way, and forcing things to be in the travel lane, so, you know, I would concur with what he did in sixty-two. And, and we have reaffirmed again-
In two thousand and two?
Two thousand and two, and, you know, I, a little bit of a concern with a building being, part of a building being in the right of way, and unfortunately, there's a well in that building, and of course, there's no salting, butt salting or anything going on there, but if then it would get some kind of development, and then you start treating the road, I'd like to see, make sure that the town's health on this, if the well gets contaminated, you know, so.
Mike, what, how do you use that law?
I'm all set.
And give us your thoughts on that.
I concur with that, I don't wanna get in a circle again, but I think, I think previous decisions were wise, and I think he owes the both gentlemen, I mean, I've heard history of posts in the road and they were removed, that's a non-issue now, but I hear other issues about big beetles in the road, we just gotta work to not block the road, that's, that's a part of mine. And the thing is, we can void court, so be it, I don't think we need to go to court. I don't like to have beetles ticketed or towed out in there, I think that's, that's an extreme measure that we have to keep it clear. And the thing is, we'll, we'll do that if we have to, I don't want that to happen, I don't have to work to anybody, and I, I think we can work this out. Now, the other portions, the north lead portion, I, I concur with you, but I think that may be a civil matter to be decided, but not, not by us. I leave it at that.
Okay, um, let me just ask one more time, you got something?
Yeah, um, what I didn't hear from anybody was, what about emergency vehicles? You know, you may have to access them, we've had fires in the woods many times before, people getting hurt out in the woods, we've got to get out there and get them, so.
And that just reiterates why it should be clear.
Right, yes, that's my point, it needs to be open for even emergency vehicles, you know, I'm sure John Williams would have agreed with that.
Yeah.
And the only other thing I would add is, you know, to change a decision or make something different, unfortunately, we have a lot of different road situations in town, and so it doesn't take much for someone to say, "Wait a second, I did it for this one", which, why am I so different than that person? So, you know, that's the other thing to consider.
Right. Would you, could you review what the, the, the-
If I, just, I don't wanna say shorten this, but, um, the, the page three of three, there's a bulleted or dashed, a summary of three things, I tried to put at the end of the still it.
Do you wanna read those, James, or me?
Uh, I, I certainly can read them, but I don't wanna step into a little bit of party there, and, again, this is the, the last section, last paragraph of my letter to the Board of Selectmen, January eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. The first bulleted item, which is what my clients had instructed me to request as far as relief or action from the Board of Selectmen in connection with this matter, in requesting that the Board of Selectmen issue a cease and desist order to Mr. Menard commanding and requiring him to, and then the first bulleted item is, immediately remove each vehicle, trailer, tractor, hay bale, wood, and, and/or all other items of personal property from within the public right of way. Second, immediately remove all structures, landscaping, and/or other improvements from the public right of way, and relocate, same onto his, meaning Mr. Menard, relocate same onto his land beyond the public right of way. And third, provide assurances that he, meaning Mr. Menard, guests of three Holmes Road and/or anyone acting on his behalf, will keep all vehicles, trailers, tractors, hay bales, and other animal feeds, manure, wood slash firewood, and/or all other materials and items of personal property or use from being parked, placed, and/or stored, even if temporarily within the public right of way.
I mean, I think, I think these previous selectmen did it very clearly, this means that the general public can use this right of way, and it cannot be blocked in any way. I mean, I understand you've broken this down into those three bulletin points, and talks about all of those other items. But I think that we've talked it out tonight, that they're not gonna block that, and they shouldn't have the right to block that. Do you guys wanna read each of those items into a, a motion, or you wanna-
I, I, I think previous letter is fine with me, I think, I'd like to get a, a legal opinion from the town about, you know, the portion of a building that's been there for twenty plus years, as far as what avenue do we have to follow with that? I don't think I can make a decision tonight on that at all.
Right, on the middle portion, that kind of wounded to that, you know?
You may be right, having, having our attorney, you know, that was, so.
Pat, have you come across any buildings in a right of way before during your time, and have any releases been done or anything to that effect to, to hold the town not liable, or?
I wouldn't have any trouble doing that at all.
Because, um, what we're working at is, you know, we weren't aware that that building was within the right of way until we just got this paperwork.
And we didn't know that we had the survey, how far it was, but I don't think Mitch would have any problem at all releasing the town for liability, it actually protects the well, it's for his benefit, so that wouldn't be a problem at all.
You're talking about like a hold harmless agreement?
Right, if that's what you're asking, I don't think that's-
You know, we'll probably get a legal, but, you know, the other thing is, until your letter stated that there was a well, and I had no idea the well was there, 'cause that wasn't on the map that I could see, so, um, we would probably like the same type of thing with the bad white bulbs, and not really salting that portion of the road, so it's quite a ways from there, but because it's in the town's right of way, I think that, you know, there should be some, some legal documentation put together on that shed and the well.
Yeah, we can certainly do the whole harmless, but I'll wait to hear from you after you talk to your attorney, I have no problem with that.
And if you wanted to draw something in advance, um, so we could have a look at that, and we'll have a look at the wording, like that might not, you know, that might not hurt, you know? Jim, have you run into that at all before, and, and do you guys have any issue? Now, this is the town public right of way portion we're talking about, not the part that's been discontinued.
Right.
But as far as I can tell, that shit's been there since around two thousand, from the only one note I could see on the file that the town has.
Right.
And the well could have been there longer, although I think we can look that well up with the state, maybe we can do that, because I know the state does have well locations labeled.
We already checked it, I don't think there's-
This one doesn't have one.
No, the, the, well, or-
I know it was fairly recent that they started doing that, so.
I think the critical point here is, uh, blocking the access, right, and that's paramount, I, I see that from your-
I, I can certainly make this request outside of the meeting, uh, to, to, but with what the board has already requested as far as the survey and, you know, the limits of the public's right of way, um, if I can request that, you know, while the surveyors are there, they take a shot, so to speak, on the wellhead for elevation and location, so that's also plunked.
And I think they have a copy of, but it is, it is on your survey of your, that wellhead is on your map for the septic plan, global.
Oh, okay.
So that's where I found it.
Okay, in, in reference to the shed?
Yes.
Okay, I hadn't seen that, so, okay.
So I just have my other note that the well was inside the shed, I don't know where I'd find out anything more about it, it's probably been there since the original house.
It did look like, it did look like an artesian well, right?
Okay, I don't know if I-
And the picture did, I'm asking Mitch to look like an artesian well, and, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'm thinking, you know, the traveled portion of the road obviously is right there to the side of the shed, if we can keep that open, I think, we've had an agreement to that tonight, and I think that's, that's one of those bigger issue there than, uh, yeah, we definitely would like to, to have some clarification on the shed and kinda work that out, and we'll include you on that. Correspondence, it's something that's been there for a long time, I think you might give an equitable waiver to some sort of effect, but I'm not sure the town was to provide anything like that to them, because it was something that was probably get built, and nobody noticed it until it was done for a period of time, and.
And, and it's my understanding that in a situation like this, there, at least there's not any clear answer as to the, you know, the, the public's right of way, um, sort of being waived, released, or, you know, overtaken by something existing within it.
That would have to be done at the town meeting if it was to be done, yeah.
Some, you know, somebody plants a tree with it in the right of way, the town can still go by and remove that, so it's not like the public right of way, or the public's rights to-
Have been diminished.
Had been right, diminished anyway.
Well, people put their lawns and their sprinkler heads and all that on the up to the edge of pavement now.
That doesn't mean that the public's right is impeded anywhere else.
Wait a second, if they can put the grass and sprinkler heads up to the edge of the traveled way-
The town could, the town could still go through and remove it, within the public right of way, that's all.
But that doesn't need to feel with the right to pass.
That's not what we're talking about.
No, I'm, I'm not saying you're responsible.
But I would challenge you on that, a building, six feet into the right of way does impede ability to pass, especially if there's something on the other side of the road, parking, big of the, you know, butters is parking on the other side of the road, and, or, it does have a potential impact impede, and that's a concern.
The pole needs to be moved.
Well, the thing is, thing is, you say the pole, I think I'm gonna challenge in the pole, yes, I mean, you may be right, the pole may need to be moved, but I challenge also, your, your structure may be, may be moved too.
The pole was much further into the right of way.
It's on the common land though, that needs to be understood.
I understand, okay, but the thing is, we'll talk about that, but the thing is, uh, but I think for now, I think the part of state, I wanna, not go to circle, but the part of state is, we're not gonna block the right of way.
That's not a problem, at all times it'll be open for somebody to drive through it.
Thank you.
That's all we, we need to do, right?
At this point, yes. Yeah, so I think if there's a further letter from the board, we'll do that, but I think tonight we reaffirm it, the two thousand and two letter, which states that nothing can be parked in that right of way, which would include all three of your paragraphs anyway. So, Ryan, are you down there?
Yes, sir.
Why don't you ask a question, and then we'll talk to you.
Um, just a question on Attorney Sussie's letter, he did not accept the shed, he's asked you guys to have him remove everything, I think I'd like to keep the shed separate if I could, that's all.
Yeah, we have, we didn't include that when we just did our discussion.
Okay.
I mean, it says, the previous letter is what we're relying on for two thousand and two, and it says nothing in the right of way, but we are gonna go down a different path with the shed, and we're gonna pull it, only for the fact it's been there since at least two thousand.
And so with the town council, that's fine.
And, and we'll go to town council, and the biggest thing I see about the shed is, as you were talking about, being on the side of the right of way, the traveled portion seems to be just this side of the shed, if we can keep that open so they can pass it properly, access your property, go through there, and you can access your property through there, and even, you know, beyond that, I know it's the, it's the part of the road that's been given back to you guys as a butters, but if you guys can respect each other on that end of the road at late, help in the long run, it is well.
You know, the size of this shed protects the well, but it doesn't protect it from contamination that comes from the ground.
Right.
And hence the no harm, yeah, the no harm, old harmless.
So, uh, the reason I ask the department, please pardon, to be here tonight, is so that, um, you can go back, this is a public record now, and you guys can reference this public record, so if you do have to go out there, there's parking within that right of way. There's a clear picture here that shows it, Brian, at the, um, I'll have you come up and take a quick look at this photograph.
Does the town have parking woodman?
A what?
A parking woodman.
I'll have to follow up and go on that path and check it out. We do have several ornaments, but some have been passed and some have not.
If you could let me know, that would be helpful.
There is a board up there, I believe. It has a yellow one on it.
Just beyond that waypoint.
Metal leaves would be a lot of minutes, the shed is right there, um, there's the shed again, that wouldn't be a lot, so that would travel the right of way.
That's where the paint area is, but, yeah.
And the pavement's kinda broken up there, so it's not all, I was looking for your, uh-
Oh, it's, it's a dash and state, yeah, it's a dash and state.
So if you're coming down, here's where Holmes Road turns up, this is the section of Old Route thirteen, from this point down where it's green shaded, was discontinued by the town, so even though both the butters have the right to use that section of the road, the public doesn't, so it still should be kept open just so that they can use it themselves, but this part is the public right of way, and that, being that shed is partially in the right of way, we're trying to keep this traveled section of the Old Route thirteen open for passing, so if there's parking here, or in that right of way, you guys, I'll have Lee give you a color copy there, but-
I think we've got, I've already scanned that, included that, and you have.
Yeah, and this copy is the most important one, 'cause it has a good line across there, and you can see it visually, and I just want your department to be aware of it, so that way, when you guys go down there, you know, from that point lower is more of a civil matter, with this point here is a town matter, so. It, I, you know, without that clarification, you don't get the guys going there, it's kind of a gray area, but I think tonight we want to make sure that you guys have that clarification. And I'm just hoping you're able.
Exactly. It's in the middle of the night.
Thank you. We'll make sure you have that copy, if you guys could just address it within the department.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay.
It would be helpful if I could find out about how it's going to, to be executed.
Yeah, and I'm not sure, I know that we do have some parking ordinance stuff, no one during our whole home day, not sure if it reflects in the other areas, I'll check that for you.
Yeah, I don't know if he's gonna apply it across the board. Yeah, I don't know if you can apply it across the board, just to single one place out, that's what I'm asking, so, we'll just leave something out.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think, uh, you know, again, going back to the traveled.
The traveled was a different way to use it.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, you have anything else?
Nothing, if you don't.
I want to appreciate you guys all coming in tonight, spending a time trying to resolve this, okay?
Thank you for coming, for the owner is, is cheaper than going to court.
Oh, God.
Thank you.
It's a symbol every now and then, maybe all the houses.
Thank you guys for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I would just make a general suggestion if the, if the police department also can have like those two letters from the, from the fire boards.
Yeah, well, we're gonna, she's gonna send us a draft and then we'll attach this to the draft to have a breakthrough and then.
You know, the only thing.
It's kind of a standard attorney rules.
The only thing we personally know, yeah, the pole may be a problem except that it is more interesting, the well. But if you took the sheet off the wall, that becomes a problem too.
I've got to put all this stuff in this.
You know, the, the only thing that's going against us as a town, that building has been there for twenty, how many, since two thousand? And then so?
Doesn't make a right thing.
No, I don't, I don't.
What happens is somebody could say, take it down, because it is in the right-of-way.
Yeah, that's, that's what I want to make sure that we're lined up, uh, I want to make sure we make the business properly with legal comment.
I'd like to make sure that.
Do you know where the, where the well is? It's a big building.
Can you tell us?
I mean, it's a big building, right?
Right.
It could be wherever it's on the side.
Dave, on it.
No, if they take the shed down and the, the well could be where it is.
Dave, uh, where was the well in the building? Was it more in the, on his side?
I'll always show you. I'm a beautiful man, you won't get them.
I don't know where we did, I have a house that runs the street, it don't belong in the file.
You know, people buy houses and buy problems all the time, it doesn't come back on the public, you know what I mean? So my point is, if you have to take it out, you know.
It's not, it's, it's, it's got to come down. It was standing by, we were also, we were, uh, rolling to that, I'm watching, they're there for four years, if that was on reserve, they didn't take it.
Yeah, right, you can't buy, buy new caps.
Yeah.
This is, this is, this weekend, this weekend.
It's on, see that, see the wellhead, yes, and the well has just jumped on the edge of the road. It's not in the right.
The other thing, you know, we have all kinds of situations in town. Either another, so it's going to come along.
That's my point, you want to get this one right, so you don't have that again.
The wellhead's so close, I think.
So what is it, is it close to?
Straight up the alley.
But you know, Dave, how people did things back then, whatever they wanted, because the building's off. Really, so.
But that's the building's never been.
So, so actually, it's not. It's not.
And, and as far as, see, I see the. Mr. Soul having plenty of access to the well, that's not the issue.
No, but for this building, no.
No, no, but I mean, you know, any of that.
It could be built just the reverse.
Even for any of that road, it would have five thousand feet of access on there, but still, if you want to access that, he has that right.
It's just, as a property owner, you have to kind of remember the public, yes.
Whatever access he has, has to be used.
You know, you might be familiar with. Hey, Lee?
Yeah?
Want to make sure he has the, uh, two thousand and two decision to go with that? Do you know where that is, you want me to show it to you?
Yeah, see, it's.
A lot of change to that one.
Do you want me to need that?
Oh. Here goes our public record.
No, no, we have a.
All right, hold that.
Do you want it up to pass out or what do you want? I just want it not to stop as we get, I just want it not to be over.
It's, it's a lawyer's tip, the lawyer's.
They're on the side of the shed, that's it.
This responsibility vote, wait, because obviously someone put posts in the middle of the road at one point, if you.
Yeah, I know, but, well, I understand that because I never thought.
To be on that shed is where.
And I know that the town has continued the rule, both the bodies own for the middle.
Right.
It's handed have, who might have had it there.
In fact, that Monday, more still have access.
And, and a, a butters.
I'll send out something.
That's a.
Now, I would go ahead and ask that, but they.
Yes.
If he has any questions, have him give me a call, but I figure.
But to me, it, it moved, it's been removed.
You guys get a call.
The post has been removed, so.
This is.
Bring it up. To me, it was.
So I would say if you'd ask a lot of it, nothing clearly stated where it is, you know, how we, like, this is civil, and sometimes it isn't, sometimes it's really not.
Yeah.
Well, if you guys ask us before we're out this weekend, at least have something.
Perfect.
Just bring the taser with you when you go.
So.
Yes, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
My knee cap, where the old, uh, old agency was coming on, that area. The hosts there built a garage, it was there five, six years, and then they discovered, didn't have a permit, and they sure they had a garage there. And he's just using that as an example. Yeah, I'm picking it right now, all it was, was a cement slab they went, who went by, but it was a garage there, because it slaved it.
Well, technically here, I mean, this is a rebuilding permit for a, from big search, and. But the thing is, it needs more research.
Maybe go to court if you try to put that on.
Oh, no, no, no.
Something that's twenty-five years old?
That's, that's why I want a legal opinion, I don't want.
Turn that book from in here.
I, Lee, there's risk there.
Oh, of course, the waiver would be what they have there.
As based on the court of law, waiver, I think.
Yeah. Okay, good for us.
Okay, they gendered?
Actually, because of public comment, I feel.
I'm done.
Yeah. You think you're worn out, you should be all sunken hidey with this mask on. They have to give you back this file afterwards.
Must be pretty wet in there, Dave. Must be pretty wet in there.
It's damp. Okay, um, bringing this. How is it they do that, bring this back to order? I think that we got, I think that this went a long way tonight, I think that, uh, I think we had some resolution that they can work with. Public comment has passed, um, a big emotion to go with non-public per RSA ninety-one dash eight, three, one, two, paragraph B, a hiring.